Good afternoon and welcome to the first meeting of Beaver Creek City Council of 2025. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beaus.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. I will turn it over to Councilmember Doer.
Thanks, please. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To remain standing for just a moment, it's been a difficult start to the year with the terrorist attack in New Orleans, Louisiana, as well as the wildfires in Los Angeles, California, and it's a great reminder to me of the importance of emergency responders for the way that they sacrifice for a community, for the role of a city council and others in government to really help those there, their families, and to say thank you because they so often put their lives in harm's way for the safety of us all. So please join me in a moment of silent prayer for the victims in New Orleans, families that have lost loved ones and property in LA, and for all emergency responders and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions?
I'll approve the agenda here.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We have some minutes from December 9th. That was the only meeting we had in December. Any additions, corrections?
Move to approve December 9th meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from December 9th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Thank you. Public hearing, PUD 8821.
Okay, so PUD 8821 mod 11-24, an application filed by Heights Venture, 5741 Legacy Drive, Suite 320, Plano, Texas, 75024. The applicant requests a major modification to allow for the construction of a 2,400 square foot restaurant on 1.36 acres. The property is located at 2761 Fairfield Commons further described as Book Four, Page Three, Parcel 56 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Do we have an applicant? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Eric Ablin, Heights Venture Architects, 3333 Warrenville Road, Lyle, Illinois, with Heights Venture Architects representing Panda Express. Thank you all this evening for taking the time to hear our proposal. I want to start by just introducing Panda Express themselves. Originally started in 1973, they started the Panda Inn in Pasadena, California, just finished a remodel of that, and that acted as an incubator to what eventually became the Panda Express model in the early 80s that rolled out. This company is still family owned by Andrew and Peggy Shern, and they oversee really a lot of detailed operations with not only the site plans, every site plan goes across their desk and gets their approval, but with the day-to-day operations and how they run their company. People that I've talked to, they're based out of LA and Pasadena area. People I've talked to, they're okay. Most of them aren't directly affected, but they are managing some relief efforts, and over the weekend they offered free meals to all of their first responders and firefighters. This is example of the kind of community involvement that Panda Express likes to engage in. They really like to engage in individual communities, high schools, and other charitable organizations in the areas. So look forward to outreach from operators in time, or they'll accept when schools or other organizations want to have fundraisers or whatnot. They're open to having those kind of partnerships. This particular Panda Express is part of the new Panda Home concept. This is redesigned a couple of years ago, and you'll see a couple of these opening up over the last couple of years. It's a whole new concept, really birthed out of COVID where they lost a lot of guest interaction, and they wanted to really reinforce that family environment again, having dinner with your family or have a dinner at their home with your family. You see, the entries, the portals of interaction are encased in the fiber-on material that looks like natural wood but has the durability of commercial material. We have a nice solid base stone, ephesus and stucco as the white over the stone, and then you have traditional Chinese architecture elements such as a swoop roof. The corners have these lantern effects, and these colors and these designs are really built out of the traditional Chinese architecture. The entryway is encapsulated by a moon gate, which you'll often see at the entrances of Chinese gardens. Again, these are materials up front, just a small, relatively simple modern palette, but it has a really high quality and has good effect. The interiors have been all redesigned with the same natural wood coming from the portals of interaction on the outside. They pour that into the inside as the guest experience with the tables and the entryway before you get to the serving line. In the back, you see the Chinese mural, which is a really activated space for a nice little niche for different dining experience. So they really elevated their interiors, and they're trying to separate themselves above a fast casual type of environment. Thank you. A couple more shots of the interior. It's really well lit, and we try to put as many windows as possible. Two-thirds of the store is all back of house and kitchen, so the dining experience and the... Maybe that's me. Yeah. Again, there's your interior palette. Get to the site plan here. So we're located at the old Chase Bank on the corner of Pentagon and Fairfield Commons. We are pushing the building closer to the corner. This allows for better orientation for the drive-through entrance and parking, and gives us a little bit of visibility for that high corner. We're about 10 to 12 feet off of Pentagon Drive road. These are images of the existing building that will be demolished and kind of the views from the various streets. So we have a 16-car stack, and we have about 53 parking spaces. We worked with staff to increase our landscaping around the building and around the site itself. Because we are pushing a little bit closer to the rightaways, we have a 15-foot retaining wall that is at the corner, 15-foot is its highest, and then tapers off to zero as you get towards the hotel to your west or to the south, closer to Fairfield Commons Interior Drive. We've done visibility studies and made sure the landscaping there is appropriate so that the wall or the landscaping doesn't block any kind of traffic flow and visibility of guests circulating around the site, interior or exterior. Brief signage package, most signage is up front towards the streets, then we have two drive-through lanes and some interior signage as well. And again, I appreciate your time. Thank you for hearing our presentation and stand here for any questions as needed.
Thank you. We've got staff input, and then we'll have some questions probably later.
Hello, everyone. My name is Colin Carville. I'm the city planner here. And I will try to not reiterate a lot of the presentation that the applicant gave. He did a wonderful job of explaining that, and I'll probably just echo a lot of what he is saying. Unfortunately...
I guess that one's dead. Tell me when.
Yes, I am good to go. So the property is a former PNC bank. That was a much larger building. It was 4,600 square feet. This current building will be 2,500 square feet, so considerably less on that property. It sits on 1.365 acres. Next slide, Pete. Thanks. It sits on the northern side of the mall. Right adjacent, adjacent on the right side is that new Raising Cane's, and on the left is the Courtyard Hotel. Here's your first look at the site plan. Once again, sits kind of on the eastern side of the site. Next slide, Pete. Applicant did a great job explaining. I won't reiterate. I think just one of the key components, it's 23 feet tall, and as the applicant stated, it mirrors a lot of the current modern Panda Express locations that we see kind of throughout the country. So we're happy that we're kind of getting the most updated look, starting from kind of the stone at the base to kind of the wood and ephesus as you go up. Parking provided, so they don't provide any outdoor seating, so we're just strictly looking at the interior parking for this location. Our zoning code states 100 square feet of floor area and one employee. You'll need a space for that. So that equates to roughly 25 spaces for the building and about 15 spaces for the employees, estimating about 15 employees on their largest shift, bringing their total there to 40. They're providing 50 spaces with three ADA spaces, so we're happy with what the parking provided for this submission. Access and transportation improvements. So they do share, kind of on that southwestern corner, they do share an entrance with the Courtyard Hotel. That's their only primary ingress and egress for that location. They are installing a sidewalk along the eastern property line, as well as the applicant stated, the retaining wall on the northern side as well, but that installation of the sidewalk will help connectivity with that site and overall pedestrian-friendly environment for the mall area. And the applicant did state, so our code takes the stacking actually from the first point where you essentially put your order in. So staff estimated that from that, that site, it comes out to about roughly nine spaces that they're providing. Obviously, as you get towards kind of the windows there, that's where you see that 15 figure that the applicant stated. Staff was okay with that and with what they provided, and that nine spaces just goes right to the end of where you turn in. So there is some additional stacking in the parking lot area that we wouldn't count, but it accounts for some of that overflow that we see and are overly concerned about with, you know, feeding into the main street. So happy with what they provided and don't foresee any issues with stacking at this location. As the applicant said, they did provide a great landscaping plan that mimics a lot of the surrounding businesses in the area. We are working with them to add some additional landscaping around the base of the building just to give a better aesthetic, but they're happy to meet those standards, and we're happy with what they submitted. And here is just a first look at that landscaping plan with the note that we are expecting an updated set of this upon approval. And the applicant also kind of mentioned the signage that they're providing. We did, they are asking for, you know, a variation of signage, so we are imposing a 70-foot square foot wall signage requirement on the northwest and east just to account for any surprises down the line. So we're limiting them to 70 square feet per each side minus the southern side. They are refacing an existing monument sign, and then your typical standard signage with like a menu board and things like that that are similar to most fast-food Just a quick look at the signage that they're providing. Once again, mirrors most standard and modern Panda Express locations. And the planning commission rendered a unanimous approval of the request, and staff echoes that and recommending approval, subject to the 12 conditions in the motion that's here this evening. So happy to answer any questions after the public hearing concludes. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone from the audience that would like to come forward and speak to this, please do so. Again, your name and address. I'm seeing everybody's jumping up to talk, so not seeing one, I'll close the public portion. Counsel, any input? Speak up.
Just... Oh, sorry. I just wanted to thank the applicant. I really appreciate the information in the background. I've heard of this restaurant before, but it's some really good information, and we appreciate you picking Beaver Creek and specifically this area. So thank you.
I did have a couple of questions for the applicant. First, I'll echo Councilwoman Garcia's comments. Thank you very much for thinking of Beaver Creek. I love the new design. I think it reflects well on your brand and how we are in Beaver Creek as well. So thank you for that. I believe in the packet of information we received, and I just want to clarify this, the site plan called for that 15-foot retaining wall. There was a guardrail and a fence as well. If I, you didn't make a presentation about that, I just wanted to double check because 15 feet is a long way up for cars to be driving around, and can you confirm that?
Absolutely. So the retaining wall will be a modular block. It'll match aesthetically like the hotel's retaining wall. It'll have a pedestrian and a vehicular guardrail around the perimeter so that, yes, it's quite a fall hazard, and it'll be designed appropriately at the most significant points where cars are moving the fastest going into the drive-through and then exiting the drive-through. That's where the majority of the reinforced vehicular guardrails is going to be at.
Okay, very good. And then in your history with the new design, there's a lot of white on the building. Is that easy to clean? Does it get dirty? It seems to me like with all the traffic on Pentagon and at the mall...
Sure.
I would hate to see it look badly.
You know, we've opened up a couple of these, and even their older versions have wider, kind of lighter colors on it. A couple of these up north in Wisconsin, and they've been aging well. You know, they do have to periodically, I think, they probably have a maintenance plan where they clean and wash, but at the end of construction is usually when most of the dirt is most visible, right? That first snow, that first rain, that's when everything is washing off the construction dirt, and they come back and they clean it. They clean the parking lot before opening and all that. So far, it's held up well. As far as, you know, we use either a stow, ephesus or a stucco as the material, it's, you know, it's pretty standard construction material, and it holds up pretty well. That is a concern, of course, as time goes on, and if you have leaks where the roof areas are, things that you don't anticipate where waters go, that could show up and streak. But I will say that their maintenance and operation programs are pretty thorough. They have, they ask their associates to scrape those black gum blobs off their parking lot and off the sidewalks, and they do that on a regular basis. And so they're really, they really like to keep a clean site, and so maintenance of dumpsters and trash and all that stuff is usually never a concern once they open up.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Go ahead.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. This is a very good brand that's increasingly becoming popular in this area. I think there's a lot that Panda Express is bringing, and I think there's a lot of excitement around it. What is the average speed of fulfilling an order through the drive-through?
It's two to four minutes, and those that run longer, if you have a larger order, they have two designated post-drive-through waiting spaces, and typically those two parking spaces are enough. If they need more, there's, that's usually why we like to have 40 to 50 parking spaces. So if an order takes too long, they push them out of the queue, and then the associate runs out and delivers the order to them to keep the rest of the flow going.
I teach at Cedarville University, and we added a Panda Express in the fall of 2022, and it is still packed, jam-packed. What is your contingency plan for the drive-through? Because I can imagine you going beyond the nine stacks. I mean, I think there could be times when this is very, very, very popular.
During the honeymoon period, we would anticipate a pretty high demand for drive-through and sit-down service. What the operations do is they monitor out of the back cameras, they monitor that stack. And if it starts getting close to the entrance and starts impacting that entrance, they can throw out cones to circulate the drive-through traffic through the parking lot, snake it around a couple times before it gets to the entrance. So their key concern is don't block that entrance, and of course, don't block Fairfield Commons. And so they monitor this, and if it does start to overflow and get pretty crazy, they can go out there, cone it, and then direct traffic around.
Do you have anything with, say, Chick-fil-A or Seven Brew that has an iPad where they take orders, where they can expedite? Do you have something similar?
Not yet. They do have that second drive-through lane and potentially a second delivery lane for food, and that's kind of uses the escape lane concept, and that's why it's two lanes at the drive-through window. They don't operationally have that up to speed yet, and I would imagine in, you know, as sales demand and as they roll that out, they're going to work towards something like that, but they're not quite there.
Yeah, I like the redesign utilizing cones because I think there could be, could be times when this is really backed up because of its popularity, but that's helpful. What's the plan with the existing shrubbery? I know Mr. Carville discussed that to some degree, but there are trees that run alongside there. There's a lot that's not on this initial map that is changing.
I think the majority of the corner, and I'll go to the southeast corner where the intersection Fairfield Commons Boulevard and Boulevard meet, that's all being sort of redesigned and eliminated because the drive-through lane and the building is sort of shifting over towards the east from the existing. But the existing bank is sort of centered in the middle of the site, and it gives them a lot of opportunities for those corner landscape areas. So we'll be minimizing those. That retaining wall then gets built in there. The new sidewalk gets built along Fairfield Commons towards Pentagon as there is no, there is no pedestrian connection existing. So some of that landscaping will get sort of reworked and eliminated because of that sidewalk as well.
Yeah. Thanks. I've just strongly encourage you to work with Mr. Burkett, who's got a lot of experience in there, always makes it look good. So just working with courtyard, with the adjacent property, but I don't see it as an issue for me, but just curious, Mayor. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have a question for staff, but before that, I also would like to echo Councilwoman Garcia's thanks for joining our community. I think it's going to be very, very welcome. I also had the same questions about the drive-through speed. I've eaten inside many Panda Express, but I've never used a drive-through, so that was helpful. Colin, I have one question for you. Do you know how this site is comparable to the Raising Cane site in terms of size?
Ray, do you have a better...
They have six stack of tickets prior to their opening.
So Mr. Burkett was saying that their stacking was about six compared to the nine taken at the same point, so it looks like they have a little more runway on this one.
Okay. And did we, or have we had any concerns with stacking or kind of flooding that Fairfield Commons there?
No, I think the applicant had a really good contingency plan on that, but also, so the baseline for like a fast-food establishment is about three minutes, and the baseline for that's five. So we thought with nine provided, with some of the contingency plans, we thought we were comfortable with where we were at with it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank the applicant. I appreciate you. I know the investment going into having to tear down a building and rebuild a whole new property and everything. It's a huge investment, and glad you're coming. All my questions been answered.
Chuck, anything? Okay. Again, I'd like to echo everyone. Thank you for considering Beaver Creek. Especially that area where you're going in with that new thing that they're being built there.
Dicks.
Is it dicks?
House of Sport.
Yeah. All that stuff they're going to have there should keep you pretty busy, keep them pretty busy, so. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move for the purposes of taking administrative action, approval of major modification for PUD 88-21 Panda Express on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with this application and accompanying materials satisfy the standards and criteria set forth in Section 158.066, Approval Procedures for Specific Site Plan of the Beaver Creek Zoning Code. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 88-21. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? There you go. Go build your restaurant. All right, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Resolution 25-01.
Resolution 25-01, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee, the finance director, to request advanced draws upon the amounts collected by the Green County Auditor for the City of Beaver Creek 2024 Real Estate and Personal Property Taxes collected during calendar year 2025.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you. So as we know, the county auditor and county treasurer collect taxes throughout the year, but only settle for those property taxes twice a year. This simply gives us the authority to request advances on those monies that they have collected. It could assist us in cash flow if we need it, but more importantly, gives us the opportunity to invest those monies so that we are earning interest on them instead of the county.
Anything from counsel?
Move to approve Resolution 25-01, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-01. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 25-02.
Resolution 25-02, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Green County Council on Aging, Transportation, and Senior Center Services grant funding.
Mr. Wyke.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight seeking a resolution to apply for senior services funding through the Green County Council on Aging. Every year, they make funding available to us for the City of Beaver Creek and Beaver Creek Township for the operations of the Beaver Creek Senior Center. In 2025, they have allocated just over $306,000, which accounts for approximately 51% of the revenue needed to sustain the operations of the senior center. So I'm seeking the resolution tonight to apply for that grant funding. I would also like to just compliment and commend the Green County Council on Aging for all they do for not only our Beaver Creek seniors, but those seniors in Green County.
Any input? Now, question I have, as I was reading that, half of that is to the township, and half, or not half, but it's a split between township and the city, and the township is giving their portion to the city, correct?
So the way the Council on Aging looks at this, the Beaver Creek Senior Center services both the Beaver Creek Township residents and Beaver Creek City residents. They don't have, they don't look at the two communities as separate. They're all as one for their funding formula. If you kind of look at the senior population, the seniors in Beaver Creek, including the city and the township, account for approximately a third of all seniors in Green County. Of that, when you look at the census data, those living in the City of Beaver Creek, of those third, 86% are city residents and 14% are township residents.
Along that same line, your staff report talked about Beaver Creek and Beaver Creek Township accounting for 33.1% of the senior population in Green County.
Correct.
How does that percentage relate to the amount of funding that Green County Council on Aging is allocating to Beaver Creek?
I'd have to go and meet with Karen and their staff to figure that out. I'm not sure. I think their funding formula, a lot of it depends on whether or not your center provides transportation or whether it's just senior services. We get additional funding because we provide transportation. I'm not sure the amount of, the total amount of funding that they provide to senior centers in Green County, so I would have to go back to them to ask that question.
Interesting answer, I think.
Yeah, I'd like to know that as well. I had the same one as Vice Mayor Beaus, so...
I will follow up with them and find out what their total grant funding allotment is, and I can follow up with you all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? They have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 25-02.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-02. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Wyke. Resolution 25-03.
Resolution 25-03, a resolution supporting the Ohio Municipal League's challenge of AT&amp;T's tariff application at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio.
Mr. Mormon.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. As you know, when we construct an improvement within the road right-of-way, oftentimes utilities have to move to make room for the improvements. And currently, the utility owner is responsible for paying for bearing those costs to move those utilities out of the way. Because it's the city's road right-of-way, we're building an improvement for public purposes. Recently, AT&amp;T filed an application with the Ohio Public Utilities Commission to change that, where if approved, it would require the city to reimburse the AT&amp;T for the cost of moving their facilities to make room for the public improvement, which would obviously have a significant impact on the city's capital improvement plan as those funds originally dedicated for the public improvement would be, had to be diverted to pay AT&amp;T to move their facilities. Additionally, going forward, if it were to be approved, we'd have to really think about which improvements we pick and choose because those costs can be very significant when you get into moving fiber optic cables and such. Luckily, the Ohio Municipal League is courting an effort, a joint effort with many municipalities throughout the state to challenge AT&amp;T's application. And staff recommends a city council approve the resolution to join that effort to fight their application. Happy to answer any questions.
Shift the cost. A classic, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The only question I have is, do you know, does anybody know how far along AT&amp;T is on this or did they get a big jump start? Are we chasing them on this or?
As I understand it, we have up until very soon here, next couple of days, to file the challenge to it. And there's already a law firm that's been engaged by the Ohio Municipal League to draft the necessary documents and they're looking for cities to, again, to join that effort.
What's a financial contribution?
Hasn't been determined yet.
I'm sorry?
It has not been determined yet.
Hasn't been determined, okay.
Well, I tell you what, I think it'll be well worth it because AT&amp;T is just the first one to make this application. I mean, if this passes, then we've got every fiber provider and natural gas and electric and everything else are utilizing our right-of-way and they'll use that opportunity to upgrade all their services.
There's a coordinated effort between OML and OMA and several others to go against this. I guess my question on this, and you can't answer it, but because they just applied for this in December and it's supposed to go into effect in January, I've never seen anything work that fast.
Yeah, I know they have to, to even have a hearing, to even hear the evidence and hear the arguments, they have to get their challenge of the application submitted here, again, it's a couple of days from now, but I think everything is in order for them to get that submitted.
Anything else, any other input? We have a motion?
Move to approve resolution 25-3.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 25-03. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, we will, and I think the OMA is asking for it too. I just got something on the, from that today. I guess it's council time. Councilman Littrell.
Um, I, new year, new time to think about the way things are being run everywhere. I have been thinking a lot, you know, and Councilman Dour, his statements at opening, thinking about what's happening, how things are, governments decide to run their cities or run their states. I don't think, I don't think I could say enough to everybody here and everybody out there that votes mean something. They affect you whether you're voting to vote against a school, vote against a fire department, vote against a police levy. Your votes have repercussions and sometimes people pay the price and it's after the fact. I feel badly about everybody that's suffering in LA, in California. Still haven't forgotten about people in South Carolina, being kicked out of their homes, their makeshift homes because they said FEMA money has run out. Your votes make a difference. I think that what we do is important. I think everybody, I appreciate all the council people I work with. These people care, they do a good job. I just want to leave it at that. I don't say anything about me, then this ain't about me. This is about what everybody needs to do and think, think about. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Public Service for a stellar job that they did in our two snowstorms that we had. I just think it was absolutely outstanding, the job they did, particularly in the residential areas. I know they had a priority that they had to follow, but boy, those streets were super. And Jeff and Public Service, congratulations to your guys, they did a super, super job. Also to congratulate our new chief, Lindsay. Welcome, fantastic, swearing in that they had this morning for him and wishing him all the best and the department all the best in 2025. Wardinger Park went well at Christmas time, nice crowd, had an opportunity to visit the cabins and see all the involvement as we have each year with service groups. It was really, really, really fascinating. And again, to wish the council and the staff a very happy new year, to the citizens out there the very best, looking forward to the challenges that we have in this new year, but I know we'll meet those challenges and do the very best job that we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Schwartz.
Thanks, Mayor. I first just want to thank Councilmember Dour for his words at the opening of our meeting. I think that he encapsulated kind of the things that we are facing in this nation and just asked for additional prayers. I would also like to congratulate our new chief. We are very much looking forward to it and excited. And last, I wanted to, well, not last, but I also wanted to mention that if you are looking for something to do for Valentine's Day, the Kiwanis Club of Beaver Creek is hosting the reverse raffle on February 8th. I believe it starts at 6:00 PM and I think you have the opportunity to win around $2,000. So if it's something that you're interested in, encourage you to look into that. And I have the pleasure of doing anniversaries. And we have quite a few in January. So Noah Thomas, police, one year. Austin Brown, police, one year. Joel Schuler, police, eight years. Lori McIntosh, police, nine years. Sarah DeBord, police, 11 years. Joel Diaz, police, 13 years. Karen Mahaffey, police, 14 years. Greg Weisert, police, 17 years. Jeff Fiorida, police, 33 years, although I think that's former chief. He must have hit his anniversary right before he left. Our wonderful Zach Wyke, Parks, 15 years. Dottie Richards, finance, two years. Mason McLean, public service, two years. Tony McKee, public service, two years. Trevor Gray, public service, four years. Jerry Russell, also public service, 13 years. Michael Winterbottom, public service, 13 years. Clayton Campbell, public service, 16 years. Kevin Vance, public service, 16 years. Terrence Sullivan, golf maintenance, 13 years. Andy Ambrough, golf maintenance, 20 years. And Joe Moore, which is golf, for 20 years. And so I kind of noticed a disparity. It's, we have a lot that are really starting their service and a lot that are at the end of their service, not much in between. So congratulations and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you very much. Councilman Garcia.
Thank you. Feels like we've been away for years. It's been a couple of weeks, but good to see everybody. Happy New Year. Congratulations again to Chief Fiorida on your retirement, very well deserved, and congratulations to Chief Lindsay now for your new position. Look forward to working with you this year. Otherwise, not too much of an update. Our next MVRPC meeting will be February 6th, so I'll have more information after that meeting, but look forward to a great and final year on council.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dour.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to wish everyone a happy new year, to echo some things that have been noted, particularly public services for just great work with the snow plows. And we spent a lot of time preparing for that, filling the salt barn, new salt barn, new employees, but they really came through and it was a wonderful performance. So please thank them for me. And to formally welcome Chief Lindsay as well. Great to have you, so thank you. Like to thank various residents throughout the city with their Christmas and holiday lights. We tend to attract a lot of people from outside of Beaver Creek that come in just to see them. And I was part of a couple of scavenger hunts, one with my church and another one, and so it really is a great cultural component to Beaver Creek. And I want to thank Kirkmont Church for its notability, great opportunity for young and old alike to get out and see that. And then finally, at Wardinger Park, to thank all the organizations that were there and really bring our history to life. That is an excellent thing to pass along to the next generation and to remember the beginnings of Beaver Creek. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of repeats tonight, of course, but thank you to our public service department for handling the last two snow events. One of the things that stuck out to me was the information that you shared about the cost of those snow events. That first one where we got nearly a foot of snow, I thought it was very interesting to know the city used 668 tons of salt, which equaled about $41,000 worth of material, and we spent about the exact same amount in labor to use the plow trucks and clean our streets. So, you know, keeping our roads clear of snow is not cheap, but you do a great job and I appreciate it very much. I also wanted to thank the park staff for the winter welcome at Wardinger Park. And again, congratulate Chief Fiorida on his recent retirement and congratulate Chief Chad Lindsay. You're going to do great and look forward to working with you and the rest of the leadership team. I'd like to congratulate our new Green County Commissioner, Sarah Mays, for taking her oath of office not too long ago and look forward to working with her on how the county and the city could collaborate on some things. I'd also like to send some condolences to the family of Candy Prestolowski, who previously served Beaver Creek on the BZA and Planning Commission, city council as vice mayor and as our mayor. She was an asset to our community and will be missed, and her visitation is coming up this Thursday at Tobias from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And finally, go Bucks!
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Most of what I have is kind of repeats. I want to echo what everyone said about public service, though. I get a lot of phone calls typically during this season. This year, they were all positive, not one negative one out there, and that was really nice to hear that. Everybody was really appreciative of everything you did, so please pass that along to the guys. I know they worked hard and they lost a lot of sleep, but they did a really great job. And then Chief Lindsay, welcome. I've known you for almost as long as you've been here too, so I'm excited for your tenure as chief and you've had, you'll have some big shoes to fill for the guys that have been here before. I don't think I really need to add anymore to this meeting, so we'll pass it along to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo the public service. Let me explain why public service was able to be successful. It's because of dedicated employees that worked, oh, some more than 20 hours straight, quite a few of them. But with that, it is when we are able to provide the appropriate staffing level and appropriate equipment, it's what we can do. And that recent levy that residents passed two years ago, year and a half ago, that added five additional employees, that doesn't sound like a whole lot. You know, we're a big city, we're a big square miles, a lot of population, but that added five more additional snow routes that we went from 16 to 21. That invested in our equipment to where now we have over 20 trucks instead of 16. So you begin to see the fruits of, you invest and you get the service level that, you know, we can provide. When we can't, we can't. But I appreciate the support of the residents that enabled us to give them, I think, the service level that they are apparently very happy with, which is great. The guys love to hear that. We're taking them pizza this Wednesday, they're looking forward to it, so we're going to feed them some pizza just before, maybe a little bit of some spit and stuff maybe this weekend, who knows? But thank you, we will definitely pass on. They've seen it and heard it themselves, we've gotten emails, communication from residents directly, and it puts a big smile on their face. They do love to hear it. It's a lot of hard work, well deserved, so thank you. So tonight, just briefly, just a couple announcements. Believe it or not, we haven't taken down the holiday banners yet, they're coming down soon, once we get our breath to take them down, but the veterans program is going to ramp back up, which starts tomorrow, due in by March 31st. More than likely, I'm going to say it's going to be filled before then, usually a couple of weeks and it'll be filled. Information and applications about the program is found on the city's website, beaver creekohio.gov/veteran. There'll be a limited number of polls designed, reservations for first space will be offered on first come, first served basis, and banners will be displayed annually from Memorial Day through Veterans Day, and applicants will receive the banners once taken down. The program this past year was our first. It was so successful, the families loved the banners, they kept them, it just looked great. So thank you, Councilmember Garcia pushed for this and had this idea originally a couple of years ago, it was just a matter of timing before we could get to it. And thanks for, Public Service, for all the hard work in making this happen. Katie as well. It's not easy to put those pictures together and make it look so good, but job well done and it makes us a very proud military community, so. All right. Cram the Cruiser, that's going on this Saturday, January 18th, 10:00 AM to 2:00, Beaver Creek Kroger. So officers will be accepting non-perishable food items to donate to feed to the creek, helping families in need in Beaver Creek. So please come out, stop by, say hello, let's cram the cruiser and raise this perishable food items for the donation to feed the creek, who could always use more assistance in this manner. All right, there's no excuse. Last year, we had to make our own snow to build a snowman, but this year, we don't have that problem. I'm going to suggest this weekend, starting Friday, it's going to be above 30 degrees and this weekend's supposed to be mid-30 somewhere, that snow's going to pack really well this weekend. So take a picture of your snowman or creature and email to parks@beaver creekohio.gov by February 28th, so we do have some time. But pictures will be shared on our city's Facebook page and just like in the past, the family who submits the photo with the most reactions will win the prize for the family. I believe they're always using kind of like park bucks and stuff like that for prizes to be able to participate in various park activities. And just as a reminder, it's, I know we're just getting back, but Monday, you know, January and February, we have Monday holidays, so Martin Luther King Day will be observed Monday, January 20th, so we will be closed on that Monday. Of course, non-emergencies, please contact Beaver Creek Police Department at 426-1225. And please, everybody, remind you to stay safe while traveling. That's all for tonight.
Thank you very much. Coming out of the time, citizen comments. Anyone would like to come forward and speak to city council on any issue? Please do so, state your name and address, please, and try to hold it to three minutes.
Jim Fountain, 1888 Ridge Court, and I'm most the brokenest of broken records because I thought I'd be the only one coming up here praising Jeff Mormon and the public services group for the snow removal, and I'm now the seventh or eighth or ninth person doing it. But as a citizen, I want to tell Kevin and his crew what a great job it was. When I was going to bed, having to get up early and head down to Cincinnati on Monday and Tuesday, I thought, oh, no. And sure enough, 3:00 in the morning, the snow truck is going down my street in the neighborhood. I woke up, the snow truck, thought, that's great, I can make it. And I did, and I was able to do it two days in a row with the two different snowfalls we had. But it led me to come here tonight because I thought, wait a minute, I read all this great stuff that Katie wrote and others in her group about- great stuff that Katie wrote and others in her group about the big salt barn that we have, and I read about the salt trucks that we're going to deploy, and we had this spring version three that we had through the 1st of January, where temperatures were in the 50s, near 60, and I'm thinking, there's no snow in Beaver Creek. We didn't have snow last year, we want to snow this year. And I thought, I would like to see, yeah, it's my fault for moving your power out. I'm telling you, I would like to see some good details, like Commissioner Bales talked about, and how well this new salt barn worked, the new trucks worked, because as a citizen, to hear those trucks at 3:00 in the morning and both days in a row to get myself out there to get to Cincinnati like I had to, that was great news, and the Public Services Group was just wonderful. I hate those announcements, so thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you talk like that, we can go six or seven minutes. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close the public portion, and I think Mr. Kern, you have something?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, we are adjourned.